All right. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Call us back to order. It is 6:30. The Town of Smithers acknowledges the Get Him Den Plan and the Wetsoon people on whose unceded territory we live, work, and play. And the public is notified that this meeting is being recorded in webcast, a notice of which is outside these chambers. And council, we have an agenda, no supplemental motion to approve. Counselor Bukama, Counselor Elliott, thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried first on the agenda is delegation. We have one delegation tonight. So invite Ms. Bryant to come to the delegation table. So welcome. And as you're getting set up, I think you know already, but we generally have about 15 minutes. So, you know, a few minutes for your presentation, a few minutes for a question and answer, and about that amount of time. So I'll welcome you and turn it over to you.
Thank you so much for having me here today. I'd like to acknowledge that I have been invited here today on the traditional lands of the Wetsoon. And I am coming from you or coming from the traditional ancestral land of the Claytone. Again, thank you for having me today. My name is Nicole Bryant. I'm the CEO of the Northern Regional Construction Association. I'm based out of Prince George, but we represent construction all through Northern BC. We represent approximately 225 companies, all involved in construction, businesses, trades, workers, who build our communities here in the north. Today, I'll walk you through the current state of our regional construction industry, opportunities and challenges that face us, and how NRCA partners with municipalities like yours to support growth through fair, transparent, timely procurement and delivery. Somewhere where that I need to park this hat. This way. There we go. Thank you. Um, I also know that I am competing with a very important game, so I'll try and make it quick. I was in the same situation with one of the late games in the Stanley Cup Finals during our golf tournament. So I'm familiar with being in this position. So just talking a little bit about NRCA and our role. NRCA is your regional partner in construction. As I mentioned, we represent hundreds of contractors, suppliers, and thousands of tradespeople all across the north. Our role is to advocate for fair, consistent project delivery procurement practices, help employees access a skilled workforce, promote collaboration between industry and municipalities. Our mission is simple. To build resilient northern communities by strengthening and supporting the construction sector that builds them. We see municipalities as essential partners in this mission because your policies, your infrastructure plans, your procurement practices directly shape the opportunities available to our local businesses and workers. So the landscape in BC, construction remains one of the largest economic engines in our region. It's the number one employer in BC's good sector, and it contributes about 10% to the province's GDP. In the north, the total value of active construction projects currently is around $84 billion, with another $66 billion proposed. Most of the construction companies operating here are small locally owned businesses, and 92% of these have fewer than 20 employees. These small firms employ local residences, residents reinvest in their communities, pay taxes, and keep dollars circulating in the regional economy. I'd like to note of that $66 billion, that is over half of the proposed projects currently in the province of BC. Major projects. Northern BC is home to some of the most significant infrastructure and energy projects in the country. I'm sure you all know LNG Canada and Kitimat progressing into phase two, which will double capacity and extend local economic benefits. Proposed Kits Liam LNG project valued at around $20 billion represents one of the largest indigenous-led energy projects in Canada. The coastal gas link pipeline is now operational, connecting Northern BC to the coast, and Site C Dam is also operational, bringing long-term energy capacity to our region. These major projects create ripple effects and increase housing demand and pressure on municipal infrastructure and the need for fair local procurement to keep pace in growth. Workforce capacity challenges. With all of this activity, the pressure on our workforce continues to grow. There are more than 14,000 unfilled construction jobs in BC today, and that number is expected to rise by to 35,000 by 2034. Only 5% of our current trades force is female, which highlights the need for more inclusive recruitment and training pathways. We also note that our female counterparts do leave the industry at a higher rate than men. At NRCA partnership with the BC Construction Association, we also support employers through programs like STEP Skilled Trades Employment Program, which consists of job-ready candidates to work in northern communities, Builders Life, which focuses on mental health and wellness in the construction workplaces, Stable Predictable Procurement helps these workers employed locally and builds community continuity. Unfortunately, one of the biggest risks that we're seeing today is the erosion of fair procurement practices. Some public owners, including a few municipalities, have started removing what's known as Contract A from their tender documents. Contract A has been the foundation of fair procurement in Canada for over 40 years. Removing this eliminates the legal obligation for owners to treat bidders fairly and equally. This means contractors can no longer assume a level playing field, which leads to fewer bids, higher project costs, and the loss of trust between owners and industry. A little bit of context. Contract A was established, was established through Supreme Court case Ron Engineering in 1981. It was clarified that when an owner issues a tender and a binding contract is created with each compliant bidder. This ensures fairness and transparency and equal treatment during the bidding process. Once a bidder is selected, Contract B, the actual construction contract, takes effect. For decades, this framework has protected both municipalities, owners, and contractors by providing clear rules and accountability in procurement. It's important to note that a common misconception in Contract A forces the tendering authority to enter into Contract B, and this is not true. If the bids received do not meet the project requirements, for example, budget constraints or scope concerns, the owner is not obligated to proceed with Contract B. Contract A simply ensures that all compliant bidders are treated fairly and consistently during the tendering process. So why should mayors and council care? Why should municipal leaders care about procurement law? Because procurement decisions reflect the governance and integrity and stewardship of public funds. When fairness is compromised, the consequences ripple through communities. Fewer contractors bid, project costs rise, and local businesses are left out. Beyond that, municipalities face reputational risks, and procurement is perceived as biased or inconsistent. And now with the new Prompt Payment Act coming into force, municipalities must ensure procurement and payment processes are aligned to maintain compliance and public trust. So what is payment or prompt payment legislation? So Prompt Payment Act was introduced on October 7th. It had its first reading in the BC Legislature. After decades of advocacy by BCCA, BC Construction Association, and other construction associations like ours. It's received a second reading, and we are looking forward to royal assent soon. It's a major step forward to ensure contractors and subcontractors are paid on time, which improves cash flow and reduces disputes. We believe it also strengthen late payment issues. This has long been a barrier to project delivery, especially for small businesses. The legislation will help projects stay on schedule and keep local workers employed. It also aligns with other BC provinces that already have prompt payment laws in place. So what does this mean? For municipalities, this new legislation means reviewing how your departments handle payments. You'll need to ensure that your payment and timelines and contract clauses align with the new legislation and framework. By adopting these requirements early, municipalities can avoid disputes, strengthen collaboration and relationships with contractors, and enhance public trust. NRCA is here to support you through that process. A little bit of the construction climate today. The current construction environment is challenging. Rising materials and interest costs are squeezing budgets, and we also see a shift towards climate resilient and low carbon construction, particularly in the north where temperatures and extremes and environmental conditions demand innovation. At the same time, the federal and provincial government are accelerating project approvals, which means municipalities need to respond more quickly, planning, permitting, and procurement. The message here is that municipalities can adapt procurement systems to be faster and more accountable. We are here to support municipalities in every step of the way. We can help you review procurement templates and ensure compliance with Contract A and Prompt Payment Laws. We offer training and workshops and for staff and council on procurement and tendering best practices. We can also share insight on local workforce capacity, project readiness, and regional construction trends. Our goal is to ensure that every dollar spent contributes directly to the northern economic growth and the community well-being. We also, I can also mention that the BC Construction Association offers an owners-only session, typically once a quarter, but they've been offering them more often. Now we see over 300 in attendance from municipalities and government agencies across BC, learning more about the construction industry. So here's what I'm here to ask you to do. First, review your program, your procurement templates for Contract A language. Second, begin prompt payment readiness with assessment across all departments, and that would include looking at BCCA's website and signing up for owners-only sessions, also partnering with NRCA to review policies and align project delivery. There is also benefit in attendance to our annual Build the North Conference in April, which is a great way to stay informed on what's happening in the industry. So in closing, I just want to leave you with this thought. Northern BC is growing faster than ever, and the opportunities right now are ours to capture. Fair procurement, prompt payment, and strong municipal industry partnerships can determine how much of that opportunity stays in Northern BC. NRCA is ready to work with you, not just as an advocate, but as a partner. We welcome your questions and ideas on how to strengthen your community's capacity and ensure we're building the north. And I have the QR codes up there for information for owners-only sessions. There are past topics, and you can register for the next session.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions? Counsel Ray.
Thanks for the presentation. I just saw the owners only more aimed at staff or elected officials.
It can be anybody. Elected officials, we do see quite a few elective officials as well as staff attend these sessions. They're very informational. And just to keep, just to understand, I don't attend those sessions, neither does anybody from any of the other associations. This is strictly held for owners so that it's a space where owners can discuss things without feeling the pressure of the advocacy people there as well, so.
Counsel Patterson. Thank you, Mayor Achill, and thank you for the presentation. To your point on the slide around the workforce challenges and opportunities, I was actually embarrassingly unaware of the statistic that you include around the projection of the 35,000 by 2034. We were recently at UBCM, and I went to a presentation about challenges around rural development, and that's sort of shocking when you think about the housing crisis that we're in. So my question, I love that you talked a little bit about local workforce capacity. We have these beautiful colleges that sit in rural communities across the north. Does your organization do any work to try to bring more of the trades to rural communities?
That's a great question. Yes. So there's a lot of different ways that we are beginning to work with Coast Mount College locally with the College of New Caldonia. We've got Northern Lakes as well at North in just expanding some of their training opportunities. And not just the recruitment piece, and there's a lot of different pieces within recruitment. We have our indigenous communities, which is a whole different conversation when it comes to recruitment. We have our equity-seeking groups. And we also have students. So it's not one sort of avenue, but it's many. And also understanding that we have ways to get these, these individuals who are training in the trades employed afterwards as well. So there's a lot of moving pieces that we work along with the BC Construction Association on to bring those pieces together. We also have a program that's going into our local elementary schools, which is targeted at the K to five, which is also promotes equity in construction as well as careers in construction at a very young age.
Anyone else? Thanks so much.
Thank you very much for having me.
Yeah, and I'm glad that we've got a good staff contingent here, too. Probably some of it's landing differently with staff who will have deeper knowledge than I do for sure, but thanks very much, and I wish you very safe travels tonight. It's a little cheekiness from counsel, too. Okay, thank you. Where we are now is at the public comment period. If there is someone who'd like to speak to an item on the agenda, this is the moment. Okay, then I'm gonna move on and to 8:1 then, folks, is the minutes from October 14th for approval, please. Counsel Patterson. Counsel Ray, any errors or omissions? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. So then, and next up, we are up to council reports and Counselor Bukama. Apologies, Counsel Ray, did I miss something?
I may have got my date wrong. Was there something to be released to the public tonight?
Oh, sorry. I missed that, too. Thanks for the catch. Apologies, Counsel Bukama. Mr. Shorter.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Tonight's, tonight's closed council meeting, council made and released the following motions. That Christine Tassier be reappointed for a two-year term until November 30th, 2027, that Shawna Moore be reappointed for a two-year term until November 30th, 2027, that Melissa Colonel be reappointed for a two-year term until November 30th, 2027, that Jim Poliar be reappointed to, for a two-year term until November 30th, 2027 for the Smithers Library Board.
Thanks, Mr. Shorter. And thanks to all those people who put their name for it, and thanks, Counsel Ray, for catching that. Okay, now I think we're up to the council reports and Counsel, you can come in.
Thanks, Mayor Achill. First of all, the visitor center report is there for information. Unless there's some questions. And then on my report, I just wanted to highlight that the Friends of the Library book sale was very successful this past weekend. $7,600 was raised, which is quite a significant amount. I think there's a few expenses that have to come out of that $7,600. And just a lot of positive comments from people about having it at St. Joseph's School. There's just a lot more room to move around as opposed to the squish conditions that there used to be at the Legion where the book sale was regularly held. That's it for me, Mayor Achill. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Bukama. And the book sale did load me down. That was good. Okay, thank you. And Counsel Elliot.
Thank you, Mayor. You can see by Counsel Bukama's report, he attended the library board meeting for me. I wasn't able to attend, so appreciate that. But the library report is attached and in the agenda, so take a peek. Still, every time I see the list of things they're doing, very important work they're doing in the library, so I much appreciate that.
Thanks, Counsel Elliot. And next up was Counsel Leonard, and she's sends regrets this evening. And if we, we actually don't need to make a motion to approve the Minerals North, or do we? Sorry, I'm having a moment.
No, Mayor, there's no, no motions for counsel to consider.
Okay, great. So they're just received, although I will, I will take note that staff have been reporting that the sponsorships are coming in really well, so it's actually shaping up really well. I just encourage everyone to put it in their calendars as part of the host committee. It will be great to have a good representation at Minerals North. Okay, and then Counsel Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor Achill. I'll wait. As Deputy Mayor Ray will talk about the Smithers District Transit Committee meeting that I attended, but I just wanted to provide just a quick point of clarity for folks who might be listening. I had a number of businesses in the community ask why the Town of Smithers wasn't holding Christmas in the valley this year. So just wanted to provide clarity that that's actually led by the Smithers merchants. And actually, Counsel Raven, as you can see in her report here, provided clarity on the new name, dates, and times for that event. And maybe I'll look to staff to see if I got that wrong, but I say I had not, so just wanted to provide that clarity. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Patterson. Counsel Raven sends regrets as well, though her report is here. And Counsel Ray.
So I was unable to attend the Smithers District Transit Committee. Thank you to Mayor Achill and Counselor Patterson for attending. But I am happy to make the following motions. First of all, I move that council approves the transit partners to provide free transit on New Year's Eve, December 31st, 2025, by the Regional District to bulk being the tackle.
Thanks. And a second, or please, Counsel Patterson. Any discussion? All in favor? Sorry? Were you voting, or did you have a comment?
I was just gonna say thank you to Director Stoltenberg for stepping up again this year.
Okay. And I got lost in the crossfire there. Did we actually complete the vote then? Okay, good. Counsel, our Counsel Ray.
I will move that council approves an additional six hours of bus service on New Year's Eve, December 31st, 2025, and include two security persons, one per bus, with additional funding coming from the Regional District to bulk even tackle.
Thank you. And a second, or Counsel Bukama, discussion? Going slower this time. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. Counsel Ray.
I will move that council approves the Town of Smithers in coordination with BC Transit to assess an alternate location for the bus stop currently outside the Royal Theater, located at 3731 Fourth Avenue, Smithers, DC.
And a second, or please, Counsel Patterson, and any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. Okay, thanks, Counsel Ray. Anything else from you?
Nothing this time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Ray. The usual items behind my name. My report is there. I also wanted to highlight the free transit. I think that's amazing, and Counsel Ray commented. Thanks. And I just wanted to note, you know, Counsel Bukama mentioned sort of efforts in the community, and it's each, each effort by volunteers is extraordinary, and I had the, the opportunity to attend the Volkey Valley Health Foundation Gala. And they had a fundraising objective to be able to support two surgical towers at the Volkey Valley District Hospital, and the fundraising goal was, I can't remember the final, but it was over half a million dollars, and between the quests from local people and the fundraising from Saturday night, which generated over $100,000 at that gala, the fundraising goal was achieved, and so they'll be able to contribute to surgical towers to the hospital, and it's just actually quite extraordinary. So kudos to those folks. And if there's anything from my report, I'll take questions, and otherwise, I'll move on. Okay, so we are at the staff reports. 14-1 is regarding the library board appointments that Mr. Shorter referenced, and there's a staff recommendation. Okay, I was just looking your way. Counsel Ray, Counsel Patterson, trying to look your way, but I guess you're being appointed. Never mind. Okay, any discussion? You accept? Cap, you have to accept. All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Thank you, Counsel Elliot, for serving us on the library board. And 14-2 from Ms. LeBlanc on the outdoor rink project from the Smithers Volunteer Firefighters Association with a recommendation. Or discussion if you want. I saw I had three hands. Would that move to a recommendation? Okay, and you're seconding. Okay, the recommendations on the floor. Discussion. Counsel Patterson.
Thank you, worship. I just want to say I'm so thrilled to see this project. I think that was one of the most memorable presentations that I remember from the department on this particular project and what it meant to them. My only concern, and I say this with deep sadness, is I just don't believe that we can continue to have public washrooms just because of the lack of, I don't know how to be polite and say this, but just respect for public places. I just find that it's more and more difficult to have those spaces and provide the high level of service that's needed to keep those facilities safe for all users. So I'll just leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Patterson. Anyone else? Counsel Ray?
I'm just wanting to thank this, the firefighters association for bringing this forward and for all the work they've done over the years to maintain the rink that we have now. It's good to see going forward that this, the difference I see between this and the arena is this is accessible for everybody. And I really appreciate the firefighters stepping up and providing that service to the community.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Any others? Counsel Elliot?
I will second what Counsel Ray said. It's a good project. We appreciate what the fire department does for the community.
Thanks, Counsel Elliot. Okay, I got some other stuff. So the report is from Ms. LeBlanc. I think, you know, I see the three phases here, and it says, if I'm following this, approve in principle the project, but the project's three phases. And so I'm kind of along for phase one, and I think we need some discussion on the other phases. So when I see the concept plan for Central Park, and this was part of the discussion when this project came forward, that, you know, it's a big piece of, at its full development, if it goes ahead, it's a big piece of recreation culture, recreation amenity, and what was a cultural district. And I think this has, my memory is that this is bigger than the original proposal. That's fine. There's lots of enthusiasm behind it. But I think, like, I'm okay at this point with phase one before we get to adding additional courts and adding a chiller, and there's comment in the report about possible location of a Zamboni. That's actually creating a very big recreation facility in an area that had been identified for other purposes. So it's diff, it's different than the outdoor rink as So it's diff, it's different than the outdoor rink as it's used now. So those are certainly my concerns. So you know, if this is for the entire thing, phase one, two, and three, I'm not there yet. I'm certainly at phase one. So I don't know how other counselors are feeling about it, but I think it definitely changes what we see in Central Park as a potential future. And we did have, you know, folks from the farmer's market and other entities seek clarification as well, wanting to make sure that they're fully covered in Central Park with the uses that are there. I think there's lots of real estate within the park to accommodate everyone, but going to you know, something that could be much different than what's there now. And I appreciate people who want to use it will love to have a covered facility, the thought of a Zamboni and washrooms and storage, but it's much different than the original proposal. So I'm just expressing those concerns now and see if council has any comment. And well, if no one has it, we'll take the vote and see how it goes. Council Ray.
Couple of things. First of all, you know, that recreation, that area has been used for recreation since I've lived here. I believe there's always been, there is a tennis court before it was repurposed because it wasn't useful for tennis court anymore. But I think, you know, time will tell and fundraising will tell whether the chiller, that kind of stuff will happen. But I think what I liked about it was that it actually develops a part of the park and puts parking that can be used for other things as well. So it's always kind of hard when we have kind of a concept plan to fit things into it, but I think it's not going to take away from anything else in the, in the park. And I think the parking will only add to it. And, you know, hopefully, you know, when it's all, when it all comes out and it's a complete project, kids can go and play in the, in the outdoor rink or in, in the basketball courts or what have you, while their parents are at the farmer's market. So I think it'll be a win-win for everybody.
Thanks, Council Ray. Did I see other hands? Council Patterson.
Thank you, worship. I initially shared similar concerns that you had, especially when I look at the design on page. Apologies, I don't see page number. The following page after seventy, it actually has the design itself. So the proposed phase one, that was essentially what I'm supporting this evening, recognizing that more information would have to come back at that time. Because, you know, originally, when I look at this, I mean, the visitor's information center is completely replaced or covered up as well. And then my other piece was just around, to your point, the feedback that we got from the community and just the statement that's made here that says on page seventy four of two forty, that there'll be no impact to use for other users and tenants. I guess I had also understood that when we originally did the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, but then, to your point, we did hear from other users. So my assumption is that this process would also go through a similar engagement process with other users in the vicinity, unless I've misunderstood. My understanding is that through each phase, there would be engagement and discussion with council thereafter.
Thanks. I'll make way for staff if there's any feedback, and otherwise, Council Ray.
Thank you through the chair to Council Patterson. Yes, there would be further engagement and further plans brought towards, brought to staff before anything moved forward.
Just for clarity, Ms. LeBlanc, just following what Council Patterson said. If, I mean, it is a concept, I get that. If the approve, if the motion that says approve in principle, the project as presented, so that represents the location of the ice surface and the associated amenities with it, that's actually what we're approving in principle.
Approving in principle, yes.
I can't remember where I was here. Thank you for that. Council Patterson, I think. Okay, Council Ray.
Yeah, I was just gonna point out, this is approval in principle. Every, every phase is going to come to council for a final approval. And, you know, when I think back to the skate park looks quite different than what it was originally brought to us, but it was that approval and principle that allowed them to go out and and give us quite a bit more significant project than had been originally envisioned. But it's that origin, that first step of approving in principle that gets things rolling.
Thanks, Council Ray. Anyone else? The only other comment I'll have, and just because we're approving in principle, it's the location of the ice sheet. And just a consideration for noise as the project develops, that it's right across the street from, and it is now, I'm aware that it's across the street from a residential area. But if the intention is to make a place available for more sporting activities, I just said there needs to be a recognition of noise. Okay, last call. All right, and sitting on the fence, I guess I'm gonna vote when I have to put my hand up, but it's that moment. All in favor? Any opposed? I'll support. It's, we'll do that unanimously. Okay. We are at fourteen, three. Another Skate Park Society approval in principle with a recommendation. Patterson.
Moving your ship.
Seconder. Council Elliot. It's on the floor. Council Ray.
I'm just that question through the staff. Just looking, I don't do really well with the map sometimes, just looking at where it's going. How does that impact the proposed gateway feature in the, in the Heritage Park Plan?
Ms. LeBlanc.
Thank you, through the Chair Council Ray. Thank you for the question. It does not impact anything in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. The proposed pump track fits completely within the footprint that was outlined in the master plan.
Thank you for that. So I'll support as well.
Any questions, Council Bukama?
Not a question, just a general remark. Yeah, I just feel like it's incredible what Smithers Skate Park Society has been able to accomplish over the years. They've created just an incredible facility for our town, so I want to give them recognition for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Bukama. Last call. All in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. Okay, fourteen, four, from Ms. LeBlanc, on the so there is library community space development plan contract award with the recommendation. Council Patterson, seconder, Council Bukama, discussion? Counselor Bukama and then Council Ray.
Yeah, I attended the last Library Board meeting for Counselor Elliot, and at that meeting there was just there were members of the Library Board who expressed the hope that they would certainly be consulted as plans are made for that building. I'm sure that will happen, but I just wanted to say it in an open meeting as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Bukama, Ms. LeBlanc.
Through the Chair to Council Bukama, yes, they will be consulted. They would be considered a key stakeholder in this engagement.
Thank you, Council Ray.
I just kind of wanted to state in public that it's my expectation, this is a library, and that the community uses have to be fitting in with the library. To me, otherwise, it doesn't seem very forward-thinking to buy, to buy a building for a bigger library and then constrain the library by putting other groups in there. So it has to, it's gonna have to mesh in well, so that we're not constraining the library that is the library building, I believe.
Thanks, Council Ray. Okay, this is the time, though. This, once this goes through, and I'm suspecting it will, heads up, everyone, there's going to be an opportunity to get your two cents in on this one. So this is a good one to share with the community. Are you ready? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried unanimously. And fourteen, five, report from Ms. Goodrick on letter of support from the Outdoor Rec Council with recommendation. Council Elliot, Council Bukama, any discussion? I was just gonna comment on this, the guide that they have produced. The Outdoor Rec Council has produced a guide. And at the recent Tourism Conference, it was actually kind of an interesting presentation. Louise Peterson, who's referenced here, did a presentation on how the guide works. And parallel to her was a presentation from the District of Tumblr Ridge on how they applied the guide to develop their recreation and connect all the people. So it was like a play-by-play. Here's the guide. Here's what it lets you to do. And here's a play-by-play of how it was applied. So it's just a comment, really, that the Outdoor Rec Council is doing its darndest to create tools for communities that will help us along. So I think it's worth supporting. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. Okay, we're at fourteen, seven. I'm gonna recuse. This references Tourism Smithers and myself, the company that I work for.
We're actually fourteen, six.
I'm just getting ready. Okay, not yet. Fourteen, six, report from Mr. Whedon on the Contract Award for Structural Assessment of the Visitor Center.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
And Council Elliot, seconds, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Now then, fourteen, seven, I will recuse. Just repeating, this references the Tourism Smithers Society and myself and the company I work for holds a contract with Tourism Smithers. I'll step out. Council Ray, have the chair.
Thank you, council. We have a recommendation from the Sparrowman, authorizing myself to sign the attached letter. Thank you to Sparrowman for taking the time, and I believe probably others that helped. It's a very well-crafted letter, and I think it lays out the steps that we've taken and the steps that Mr. Camus can take if he chooses to pursue further. But it seems like we've exhausted everything we can do, and so appreciate that from staff. Council Bukama?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Seconded by Council Elliot. Any discussion? Council Bukama?
Yeah, I just appreciate all the detail that went into the letter. I think it's very well-written, and I hope that yeah, it helps Mr. Camus to see that there's different route he's got to take to express his concerns. Thank you.
Council Patterson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ray. So I just want to start by saying that I deeply respect the volume of time and attention that's been taken to the matter, not only by staff, but by Mr. Camus and the volume of businesses who requested information to increase the transparency and understanding of MRDT. My only request would just be at the tail end of the letter, and with any letter that we might send out to the public related to requests similar to this, would be just saying that if they feel that the level of service, you know, wasn't satisfied or provided by the municipality, that we just directly suggest that they contact the Office of the Obtaining Person. So again, that's, I guess, the preference of the Deputy Mayor and his approach. I just felt that those latter statements to me just felt a little bit maybe unnecessary, given that individuals do have the right to request Freedom of Information requests and that this council can talk about, you know, following policy to increase the fee for service if we receive repeated FOI requests from, from anyone in the community. One of my questions through to staff, specific to the MRDT, was just, when was the last time we actually reviewed that particular fund? Just out of curiosity.
We'd have to look into it and get back to council.
And maybe I'll provide a little bit of clarity, because I'll be honest, I wasn't actually clear. I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, if I can continue. I wasn't clear myself on how that process works. But just of interest, how a direct award would go to any society in the community? I was just curious about how that works, and if there was other members of the community that would be interested in accessing funds to help to advance tourism, just if there was any clarity on how they might go about that process.
If council wishes, staff can follow up with information.
Yeah, I actually thought that the letter lays it out fairly, clearly, clearly. But feel free to talk to Mr. Doer Fine about it, Mr. Shorter.
Thank you very much. Perhaps we can just provide a bit of cursory information, and then should council wish, we can also provide an additional staff report. Should, should council make a motion and desire that follow-up? Generally speaking, the Tourism Smithers entity is, as a non-for-profit, was established for the sole purpose of managing MRDT funds and fulfilling the role of being the, the destination management entity for the for, for the community of Smithers. This was a partnership between the town, the, the business community, and the, the Board of Directors that oversees the MRDT funds reflects this. It's a culmination of business leaders in the tourism sector, as well as individuals who have a long-standing history of work within the tourism sector. So, you know, generally, I, I believe that, you know, with, with this being a nonprofit organization, there's a belief that this entity, you know, is, is, is really here for the sole purpose of, of being the, the tourism manager for our, our community. In addition to that, I'll, I'll also note that annually, we are required to submit a number of different reports to the Ministry of Finance, as well as to the Ministry of Tourism, Arts and Culture, as well as Destination B C, that lays out matters such as how we are spending the funds, making sure that we are submitting appropriate financial reporting and documentation as required by the Ministry of Finance to show that, you know, we are, to show that the, the funds are being provided to the, the Destination Marketing Organization, and that the funds are being applied as, as per the plan submitted and approved by the Town of Smithers.
One more follow-up.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Ray. So the reason why I asked that question was just my limited understanding of MRDT is that in recent years, it was expanded to include housing. And I may or may not be correct, and that's why I was just suggesting, maybe not specific to this particular letter, but just interest in when the last time maybe the conversation was had on how to capitalize on what funding might be available and other opportunities. So I'll leave it for now, but I'll just say that without the removal of some of the language just around incurring significant human resources, or you know, basically suggesting that we provide advice to members of the community on how they engage with other individuals. I, I just, I won't vote in favor just based on that specific language. Other than that, I think it was an incredibly well-written letter. Thank you.
Yeah, the language is pretty much out of my request. I believe once somebody's exhausted, all the town can do for them, it's best to let them know and to tell them, like the final one says, that these are the options that you have to pursue further. We're not telling you to go away. We're just telling you we can't help you anymore. If you're unsatisfied with our response, these are the people you can go to. I've been on council a long time. Anybody that's watched council meetings knows that I'm fairly demanding on transparency, making sure we have fair processes for bidding, et cetera. So yeah, I think that this is this was, was inappropriate, laying out of the steps that have been taken in response to the petition that was brought forward. I, Council Elliot, did you want to speak?
I'll be brief. I, I felt confident with the letter's contents and answered the questions very well. I think maybe there maybe appeared some conflict when there wasn't. But again, there's, it's, it's laid on the letter of next steps if Mr. Camus is not happy. I know he received a lot of signature businesses in town, maybe wanting to have more information about the process, and I didn't really know much about the process myself until I read some of the information, looked online. So it did clarify lots of things for me as well when this issue came about. So I'm satisfied with it.
Anything further? You know, those in favor? And opposed? That's carried with Council Patterson opposed.
Already, we are at fourteen, eight. Report from Ms. Bearman on the Contract Award for Minerals. Already, we are at fourteen eight, report from Ms. Bearman on the contract award for Minerals North with a recommendation. Councilor Bukama?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
And second or Councilor Elliott, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. Okay. And fourteen nine from Mr. Whedon on the old church re-roofing contract with the recommendation. Councilor Ray, Councilor Patterson, discussion? Councilor Bukama?
Uh, just one quick question. Is Glacier View contracting a local company? I assume it is, but I'm not sure.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, they're based in Smithers. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Ray, did you ever have it? Councilor Elliott?
Just a brief comment. I was walking by there last week and saw that the shingles were in bad shape. So I'm glad they're being replaced and this is asset management. So I really appreciate that, keeping up our buildings and good repair. So, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Elliott. Okay, not seeing any other hands, all in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Fourteen ten from Chief DeFreeze, uh, the UBCM, these have too many words in them. Okay, the EOC twenty twenty-six grant application and with the recommendation. Councilor Elliott moved both parts. Okay. And second or Councilor Patterson, any discussion? Anything you wanted to add, Chief? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? And that one's carried. Fourteen eleven, we're on a roll with the Smithers Fire Department. So from Deputy Chief Ralph on the Volunteer and Composite Fire Department Equipment and Training Grant with the recommendation. Councilor Patterson, Councilor Bukama, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that one's carried. And fourteen twelve, from ESS Director, Mr. Herzog, who's with us on the ESS twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five grant application? With the recommendation, two parts, Councilor Patterson, both firsts. Okay, and a second or Councilor Ray, any discussion? Council Patterson?
Thank you, worship, just on the comment that was made by staff that in twenty twenty-five, the province reduced the ESS funding stream. Um, and I was going to make a motion that we will include it in advocacy for UBCM in the coming year, but I believe it's already on our list, um, from last year so that we would review it again in coming years. I can't remember if it's specific to this application, but I believe it was for ESS support, funding support.
I see Mr. Dura and then Mr. Schroder, if you need.
Um, I believe the advocacy item that we had on the, uh, list from last year was related to, um, financing, basically capital, um, purchases for ESS. So thinking about, um, tents and stuff like that to cover, um, infrastructure to, to protect some of the ESS assets that we have.
Mr. Schroder.
And just to, uh, make a quick add on to that, um, that was one of the, um, approved, um, resolutions, uh, that went forward during, uh, the Union of British Columbian Municipalities. So it is, um, on their formal advocacy docket with the prob, with the provincial government.
Excellent, if I may, worship, thank you. Um, so it's something that I will just keep at the forefront of my mind when we get to a stage of talking about, um, advocacy priorities, um, for the coming year. And then also, I don't know if it makes sense, um, but looking through to our new, uh, Director of Finance, if, as we enter into the financial planning, um, season, how we can create greater reserve fund for ESS if, um, we're not successful in getting more supports, um, from the province moving forward. Just something that I'd be interested in exploring. Thank you.
Okay, so idea versus question. Okay, Councilor Ray?
I'll also word the motion that's on the table right now, but I would also, um, I think, given that our organization is representing several communities, I actually think it should probably be something that we advocate. Even though UBCM is also doing it, um, I think it would be worth putting on our advocacy list.
Okay, um, so someone's got to park it. I think, uh, have we started a UBCM advocacy list? We just got back. Mr. Schroder?
Uh, thank you very much. Um, certainly a list is, uh, you know, not quite prepared as, uh, staff, uh, you know, as, as, uh, council has recently returned from UBCM. Um, but, uh, we're happy to begin that list, uh, with an item like this of council, so chooses. Um, and I, I believe that, uh, additional information on, um, the beginning of council's advocacy cycle will be coming, um, you know, believe in the, in the new year, if not, uh, potentially a little bit sooner, just, uh, depending on the capacity.
Okay, thanks for that, Mr. Schroder. And perhaps the counselors could kind of put a little sticky on your desks too, so that we're not, um, asking stuff so early to sort of begin that list. But, okay, any other comments on this one? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. And I'll just note, um, you know, with these three reports, it's clear, um, the ability and, and you know, the, uh, desire of the fire department to sort of provide beyond the normal service, whatever normal means, but we would think about, you know, it's just the fire protection for our community and being able to provide some, uh, shoulder power for our neighbors as well. So it certainly speaks to the crew and the desire to add these services. So thank you for that. If you could share it with the, uh, the other team members when you're back there. Okay, and so now we're at fourteen thirteen, Mr. Lawrence is here, report from him on the Smithers wastewater treatment plant desludging tender award. Sounds lovely. Councilor Ray?
Move the recommendation.
Thank you. A second or Councilor Elliott, any discussion? Councilor Ray?
I, I just wanted to bring something out of the report, um, because we have been, um, there is a class three estimate out at the airport that we were kind of, um, surprised by and we, we made sure we mentioned that we were disappointed in it. And so I think we should mention, um, when we're impressed by the class three estimate as well. It could work there.
Thanks, Councilor Ray. Uh, good point. And, um, it's also worth noting that we're still, um, you know, benefiting from the Northern Pop, Northern Capital and Planning Grant, which is many years old now, and we've been able to extend that money, backstopping projects and funding projects over many years now. So that's actually worth noting, and that was the precursor to the Northwest Resource Benefit Alliance. So lots of work over many years are actually delivering projects here. So that's worth noting too. And, uh, thanks to Mr. Lawrence and his team for moving it along. Uh, Council Patterson?
I thank you, Maratrol. Just a bit of an embarrassing question through to Mr. Lawrence. How often does one disludge a wastewater treatment plant?
Mr. Lawrence?
Through the mayor to Councilor Patterson, it varies municipality to municipality, but oftentimes not very often. So down in Smithers, this would be the first time desludging the lagoon here, which is in need.
Uh, thank you, worship. So a follow-up question, again, thinking about, uh, financial planning. Is there, I'm, I'm treading lightly here because I can't ask you for a recommendation, but is it, can you advise on how often one should disludge a wastewater treatment facility?
Mr. Lawrence?
Through the mayor to Councilor Patterson, we're looking at changing some of the, some of the process equipment in the lagoon. And while that equipment changes, we don't have, we don't have firm numbers or timelines on what that will do, um, and our sludge loading profile. But what our staff does, uh, with the help of some contracted services is, um, engage in sludge profiles throughout certain times, throughout X amount of years to understand what the sludge loading volumes are.
Councilor Ray?
Yeah, and I just, because I've been around a long time, I, I do think that it's a testament to our staff at present and in the past, uh, for the good work that they have done managing that sewage lagoon. That's part of the reason why we haven't had to disludge as often as maybe some others.
Thanks, Councilor Ray. Okay, any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Okay, um, fourteen fourteen from Mr. Lawrence on seasonal decoration upgrades with, uh, recommendation. Council Patterson moves, or second or Councilor Elliott, discussion? Council Patterson?
Thank you, worship. I just want to say at first blush, I felt a little bit silly thinking, oh, you're going to spend fifty thousand dollars on seasonal decoration upgrades. But when I engage with our community, I'm surprised at the number of comments that I receive from our constituents around how these things matter. Um, so I just want to say that, uh, nothing more. I support the recommendation. Thank you, Councilor Ray.
I, I also support the, um, recommendation. I'm, I don't usually weigh in on things of beauty and such, but, um, I, one thing that I have always noticed and I, I understand why we're not doing it now, but it'll be interesting to see how Main Street looks without the lights along, trying to tie it all together. So, um, just, that's more of a comment than anything, but that's kind of whenever I see a picture of Main Street in the winter, those lights are always across. So just see how that, how that goes and we can change things if we need to.
Thanks, Councilor Ray. Any others? Councilor Elliott?
Yeah, I think it's a worthy project. I've heard lots of comments about maybe we should do some upgrades to our decorations and Christmas is a big time of year for us in this town and Main Street looks beautiful in the wintertime. So I do appreciate this project.
Thanks, Councilor Elliott. Anyone else? Mr. Lawrence, I got a question. We talked about those crosslights, the cable lights or the cables. And so I wander downtown looking at them. So I understand the ones that go across Main Street. I can see where they conflict with the flags. And I was just curious about why the ones that go linearly, and you might have explained it to me, but why the ones that go like down Main Street, they don't look like they interfere with the flags. So I was just wondering about those ones.
Thank you, Maratrol. We've had some conflicts with those ones as well. Um, there, there are certain areas where the orientation of the flags and how many flags are on certain poles will also interact with those.
Yeah, I maybe, um, you know, I'm, I'm going to support it because I'm really in favor of getting refreshed decorations downtown. I'm really in favor of being bright, like when we went from the old lights to the new lights downtown, the LEDs, Main Street's dimmer. And when we pull those lights down, as Councilor Ray said, it's going to be dimmer again. So I'd be interested, you know, as you do this, to figure out what can we do to keep Main Street bright as well, so that it does seem like that really welcoming, bright, um, something that we're all kind of taking pictures of. So that those lights that go down the center contribute quite a lot to the light in the winter. So I don't know, do you have an idea on how we could do that?
Uh, thanks, Maratrol. Should, uh, council want to continue? This, um, this project is funded through RBA. If we were looking at this type of funding in perpetuity or something similar to that, um, we could look at additional lighting for the following year as well with some of this funding.
And just for clarity, would that include something to replace those? Like, uh, you don't have to give me a design now, and I know you can't do that out of your head, but it's, um, like, I think the ones on the poles are going to be a great improvement because some of them are pretty worn. And it's just, how do we create that real sense of festivity through the street? There's an example in one of the images of the pole wraps, and I don't think that's a part of this plan this year. Or is it? No. So is those things, like, how could we create that real sense of, um, you know, spectacle might be too grand a word, but something that's bright and welcoming and just really seems like it's pizzazz, sort of that downtown Smithers has been. Okay, yeah.
With the cost involved, that's, they would, there would be an opportunity to add more year over year. Um, the, the initial cost with, uh, with the deck or the pole mounted decorations are, are fairly substantial and will, will eat into a good portion of this budget. And should there be room left over, we'd look, we can look towards, uh, additional lighting.
Thank you, Council Patterson?
Uh, thank you, worship. I'd just say that, um, that's also in align with, um, improvements to community safety and well-being as well. So one of the number one elements around the crime prevention through environmental design is to light up, um, areas where we see, um, repeated offenses. So I like the idea and then it makes it maybe a little less, um, industrial in a creative way and how we do that year round that maybe might be a little bit more beautiful.
Thanks, Council Patterson. Okay, oh, Mr. Dura.
Yeah, I was just gonna add as well, um, the budget is Resource Benefits Alliance funded, um, but that is one that we have operationalized. So there will be the fifty thousand dollars in the budget. Well, it would be the assumption that council would move it forward again annually.
I'm just gonna repeat that so I make sure I understand. So this year it's RBA? And for, for the future, it's operationalized. It's going to be in the budget.
We've taken that RBA funding and we've put it in the operational budget so that there is funding available.
Mr. Welsh?
Uh, previously, Ca- council allocated two hundred fifty thousand dollars towards this over twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine, fifty thousand dollars a year was allocated our, at RBA funding for these amenities.
Okay, thank you. That helps. So then circling back to Mr. Lawrence, okay, I get it. So now I can just complain about the lights if I don't like them. Okay, I got it. Perfect. All right, with that clarity, are we ready? All in favor? Any opposed? Great, that's passed. And thanks for your patience with that. Okay. That seems to be the end of the staff reports unless I've missed one. And then we go, we're right into eighteen's correspondence for information, unless we want to pull some out. So just call the numbers if you want them. Okay, that seems pretty quiet. I am going to just make note of one, and that is eighteen three, and it is the, um, the information from NCLGA, and I'm noting it because there is a webinar on, um, the twelfth, I think it's on the twelfth. And it might not seem like top of mind right now, but we, we're just at UBCM and it is on the resolutions process. And so as we think about how to craft resolutions, right now, they're in your mind as done. But in the new year, we'll be looking at what do we want to talk about at NCLGA and UBCM and resolutions are a part of it. So it's an opportunity to get a bit of information on how to do resolutions while it's open to, um, local elected and staff. So I just wanted to point it out. All right, if there's nothing else, I think we're there. Uh, motion to adjourn, please. Council Elliot and a second or Council Bukama, all in favor? Everyone's in favor. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.